Welcome, everybody, to this evening's meeting. I am calling the regular meeting to order for Monday, April 10th, 2023. It's 5 o'clock. Ms. Peck, please call and roll.
Cody Nicolai.
Here.
John Creisher.
Here.
Karen Vannenberg.
Here.
Pat McKee.
Here.
Lance Trollope.
Here.
Lee Webster.
Here.
Cory Sillers.
Here.
Jim Boucher.
Here. Please join me in the stating the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning and achievement and success. And I believe we have some speakers? There are none. We will move over number five. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, Jobs for America's Graduates for JAG. Offered at Wausau East and Enrich Excel Achieving Learning Academy is a model of learning designed to keep students in school through graduation, improving their success rates in education and career. Employers play an active role as well by investing resources, talent, and sharing their wealth of knowledge. JAG develops connections between students and professionals, disseminating ideas and matching up skills in the classroom and real-life situations. Well, I'm going to turn it over to you. That's my little introduction. There you go.
Good evening. Unfortunately, the best part of the presentation is to come so you don't have to listen to this voice of mine for very long. I'm Shannon Young. I'm the principal at EEA Learning Academy. And before we jump into the best part of the presentation, I thought it was important that we give you a little bit of background on JAG and how we came to have JAG in the Wausau School District. So this is EEA's 18th year as a school. We serve students in grades 6 through 12. And for years, we would continue to do these assessments to figure out what were any of the same links that we had. And we knew that being such a small school, one piece that was often challenging for us was that post-secondary component. When you have a small team, you have a lot of people doing lots of different things. And to find the time to devote, so that was often difficult. We know we're housed within a larger school setting, at this point, within the building of Wausau East. And I know there were times where conversations would come up, and part of that would be, well, what about the students accessing the Career Center at Wausau East? And the reality is that, for whatever reason, many of our students just weren't always comfortable in doing that. We could take them up there, but to get them to really fully engage, we knew that we needed to find out something that was within our smaller setting that would help facilitate all of that post-secondary planning. So the rest of my team could continue to focus on helping them achieve graduation, but they would be leaving with solid plans.
I'm sorry. Could you turn on the microphone?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So that was one thing that it was important to us to continue to try to figure out how we could make sure we were getting that solid post-secondary planning. And in the summer of 2021, an email came through to me from the Department of Public Instruction, and it was about JAG, Jobs for America's Graduates. And I read it, and I got super excited and thought, oh, my goodness, this might be the thing. This could really be beneficial for us. I was quickly able to schedule a call with Sarah Jo Dahlstrom, who oversees the JAG program for Forward Service Corporation. It just kept sounding better and better. The short of it is, for this program, there's some federal grant money that goes to Forward Service Corporation, and then they help coordinate and get JAG into specific, into schools that are interested in it. For us, it was a tremendous benefit because the first-year match funds were $10,000. Our governance board said, yep, we will figure out how to make that happen. And then the subsequent years are $25,000 local match that we have to raise to keep that going. When you realize that you're getting a phenomenal full-time JAG program coordinator for that amount, it is such an amazing investment for us. So as we moved forward with it, there was the opportunity then also for Wausau East and Wausau West to potentially also get a JAG coordinator. Wausau East did move forward with that process. Our first year was a little bit bumpy, the 21-22 year, just getting started, hiring people after the school year started, some of those sorts of things. And now we have landed on having Karen Bloom is the coordinator for Wausau East, and Tina Van Etter is the coordinator for EEA Learning Academy. Now that we have these two folks at the helm, it is absolutely astounding how quickly things have taken off and how many wonderful things are happening for our students as a result. And so with that intro, just to give you that little bit of history of how we got to here in the spring of 2023, I'm going to introduce Karen Bloom. She's going to introduce then a student from Wausau East. We have a student both from Wausau East and EEA who are going to be sharing their experiences with you. We thank you for your time tonight. We really appreciate this opportunity to highlight the great things that are going on.
And Cassie, if you would run, this is just a quick overview that will be going on in the background of all the things we've done so far just this school year with the students at Wausau East and EEA. So we wanted you to see all the different programs we've done over the year on top of having programs in-house where we're teaching today. Yeah?
Thank you. So I wanted to talk to you a bit about how JAG can benefit our state and our schools. JAG helps increase graduation rates. JAG brings local employers into our classroom and summer programming. Students get to know an employer, and employers take notice of our students. It's apparent when we have our guest speakers come in to talk about their careers or take a tour of a business facility that allows the kids to see what that's all about, and then they have the interest to apply. And we're making those connections happen. Upon graduation from high school and our JAG program, students are prepared to enter the workforce, military, or post-secondary school. We mentor students for another year. So JAG follows the students after they graduated for a year. So we are a valuable resource to students that have gone on after high school. And we provide that extra support. I'm now very proud to introduce our first JAG student speaker from Wausau East, Gabe Spalding.
Hello. My name is Gabe Spalding. I'm a senior here at Wausau East. A little bit about me, I was born in Mesa, Arizona. I lived there for 16 years. Schooling down there was tough. A lot of, you know, bad environments with the kids, and teachers didn't really teach. They didn't really care about the kids and their learning. They only cared about their behavior. Growing up as a kid, it was a struggle. I didn't really live in, you know, the best environments. I kind of lived in, you know, bad apartments, bad towns, where there's a lot of crime, a lot of drugs, and a lot of bad things, and my schooling was never the best. I moved here to Wausau two years ago with my family, and we wanted to be closer to our family up here because we didn't really have much down there, and a lot of them were always in and out of prison and all that stuff. And so we moved up to Wausau, side unseen of the house, only my dad saw it, started a fresh beginning, and I love it. My goal here is to be a diesel mechanic. One day, I would like to own my own shop. Actually, got accepted into the NTC Diesel Technology, and I've been hired as a service assistant at Midstate Trucking. With these opportunities, I'm now able to fulfill my dreams as a diesel mechanic. Ms. Bloom has been, Ms. Bloom has helped me so much this year and during summer school. Whenever I've had a question, she's always answered it or had a way to help me figure it out. The JAG program has helped me find the right people I need to know to talk about or talk to, talk to about, you know, shop tours and all that stuff. I actually had the opportunity to tour the city of Wausau and figure out a little bit more about what they do and Yak's Body Shop. Without the JAG program, I would have a lot of unanswered questions and a lot more stress. There's a lot of questions moving up here that were different, especially with getting my license. License was a big change for Arizona to hear a lot of different requirements. And I've talked to Ms. Bloom about driving school and all that. I would also like to thank Ms. Bloom and Ms. Bee for all they do as part of JAG and helping me fulfill my dreams to be a diesel mechanic. I can see the JAG program helping a lot of other students that are in the same boat, that are struggling to find a job or struggling to get into driving school or college. With this JAG program, they have all the resources, and they can help anybody fulfill their needs. Thank you.
I'm going to come up. Before you leave, I'd just like to make a comment. I am very impressed in what you have done. Those are changes that you have made, and I hope that we can continue to help you as you move into the future. We need diesel mechanics. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And I'd like to introduce Tina Van Etter. How are you? And Kate.
So good evening. I'm Tina Van Etter. I'm the career specialist for EEA Learning Academy. And Cassie, if you wouldn't mind looking at to the beginning, and then you can keep going again because there may be some that folks missed. We had a very busy year, and every month has been at least two field trips. I don't know if you all, I'm sure you all know the trouble we have trying to get buses. JAG pays for vans, and I take, Karen and I take the kids wherever they need to be to see things, to experience new things. We've been at least two field trips every month. We have guest speakers come in. As you can see, we're busy all the time. JAG teaches 88 competencies to get students ready for life after high school. We cover everything from time management to resume writing to conflict resolution in the workplace and above and beyond. It just goes on and on, as you can imagine, 88. We cover the JAG competencies through project-based learning, which is super helpful for a lot of our students that can't quite make the traditional schooling setting work for them. So we do things instead of just sitting and listening all the time. We engage employer partners like Goodwill, the Woodson YMCA, Crystal Finishing, to name just a few. And we utilize trauma-informed care so our students know that they always have a safe place, that they can come and get rid of some of the stress and feel like they're heard. And all those students, every single one of our students matter to the nth degree to us. And they can tell that it matters to us that they have a safe place to come to because sometimes even home isn't a safe place. So I would like to introduce my student with us today, Caitlin Lee, who is a junior at the EEA Learning Academy. Caitlin?
Hello. My name is Caitlin Lee. I'm 16 years old and a junior at Enrich Excel Achieve Learning Academy. I am a Vietnamese-American and the first generation of my family to be born in the U.S. Being from a family that was war-stricken, it was hard. Every day, my family has to deal with the trauma from the Vietnam War. Their childhoods were taken away from them. Some never got to go to college and be what they aspired to be, and some didn't know how to cope with what happened to them. My older sister and I had to step up and be our own parents because the people who we looked up to couldn't be there for us physically and emotionally. Today, I will be graduating from EEA a year early with many aspirations. I want to go to college and get a PhD. Earlier this year, I got accepted into UWSP and plan on transferring to the West Coast to finish off my degree. I will major in marine biology and plan to work with the Scripps Institution of Oceanography in San Diego, California. After that, I don't have any specific dreams, but I want to live in a big enough place to provide for me, my future, and my future cats, plants, and fish. JAG has helped me learn how to ask for help. Before the JAG program came to EEA, I barely asked for help, and if I did, it was about schoolwork. The JAG community was so welcoming and friendly that I allowed myself to be more open and trustworthy of the staff. They helped me apply for college scholarships and opened a door of opportunities, not only for me, but for other students as well. One situation was, one situation that stuck out to me was when another student who dropped out came back to school, and the staff here at EEA helped them apply to college and scholarships to help them further their education. I would like to thank both the JAG staff, Ms. Van Etter and Mrs. Bloom, for being interested in my dreams and supporting me along the way. I would also like to thank the EEA staff. They saw my potential and pushed me to be a better and greater person. Finally, I would like to thank those who support the JAG program because they allowed our school to have this opportunity that gives students extra support on things that a regular high school would not have.
So our students and ourselves are able to answer any questions you might have as well if you have a few minutes.
We may have some questions. I'm just going to congratulate you on your achievements. It's amazing, and the fact that you're able to really have high goals and reach those. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions?
Just one comment, President Boucher. We have the opportunity, and I have one last, I guess going on the 12th year now, to hear lots of different stories and examples of things that are happening within the district. You know, we get all kinds of different agenda items each week. This is probably one of the only ones that I could sit and listen to all night, hearing stories like this. You guys are both very gifted speakers. Clearly, you have a lot of determination, resiliency, and to be vulnerable as you did and to share some of those, some of that background is meaningful. And I'm sure that other kids who you have been around have learned as much from you as you have from, you know, from the schools that you guys go to. So thank you for being who you are and for allowing that, you know, the rest of that learning to happen too. So well done.
I put each, I put 10 students through graduate certification through the JAG program. And Tina has 12. Eight. Eight. So providing. That would not have been able to otherwise. Yeah.
And how diverse.
And when we did our Spotlight Day at school, we had each of us four students. No, five, pardon me. Five students that stood up and spoke about their experiences with JAG. We just didn't want to take up all your time, and some of them have since graduated. So just today, I had two graduates from last year come to me and ask for help filling out applications and who's hiring, and Ms. Bee, can you help me? And one of them I'd never even met. They hear from one another, and they hear from other teachers that we mean what we say, and we say what we mean.
I'd happily swap time for some of these other agenda items and listen to this and what we're going to in a few minutes. So well done.
Exciting program. Thank you very much. Thank you. It's kind of anticlimactic to continue after listening to this. Exactly. Moving on, Agenda Item Number 7, Approving the Consent Agenda. Appointments, separations, leaves, retirements, minutes from regular session of March 13th, 2023, and the special session of March 27th, 2023, payment of bills, budget status, and investment report. Board member salaries and canvassing statement. Donations to the district. Let me read those off. Halama's Championship Martial Arts, Great Lakes Cheese, Marathon Cheese, Chatterbox Charities, On Time Sports LLC, United Way of Marathon County, Aspirous Marketing, Bartels and Peace LLC, Edgar &amp; Carol Betancourt, Eaton Law LLP, the McDonald Foundation, Droom Modern Law Offices, Omni Glass and Paint, Prevail Bank, and Wausau West Diamond Club. So I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Hi.
President, I've got a question.
You have a question?
Yeah. I'm sorry. The appointments, there's three of them that are listed. Is the reading specialist, is that a budgeted replacement position? Okay. And, okay, and the school psychologist, a replacement? The $4 million?
Yeah.
Okay. And the last one is the Assistant Director of Special Ed. Is that a replacement or?
Yeah.
Another retirement. Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, now I'll go with all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Agenda Item 8, Middle School Math Acceleration Update. Mark Schomer, Carrie Clement, and Mark Beversdorff will present on middle school math acceleration.
Good evening. We are here to share with you an exciting update to our middle school math sequencing, basically, for incoming 7th grade students. We have Carrie and Mark, both are department heads from NAMIR, and they're going to do more.
All right. If we can switch, just to give you some background, I'm Carrie Clement. I'm the department chair at John MIR. And the way that we place our current 7th graders is on the screen right now. We have three current 7th grade level math classes. 7th grade math is just the core curriculum. The 7th grade standards taught to the majority of our students. 7th grade enriched math, then, is the same set of standards, but this is, this course is for students who are ready for something more, who can handle a faster pace, who are interested in going deeper into concepts. So it's still the same 7th grade math standards, but just presented a little bit differently and a little deeper. And then we have a 7th grade pre-algebra class, which is sometimes called a turbo class. It's fast. It's pretty much the 7th and 8th grade standards taught in one year. So it's covering a wide range of topics at a very fast pace. And that currently is just one section in each of our buildings, so fewer kids in there.
One question, I'm sorry, one question. Is that an in-person course or is, so the wave on the right-hand side is just an option for it?
So now the wave on the right-hand side is a pathway to algebra in 8th grade for the two groups of students up there that aren't currently on that path. So 7th grade pre-algebra is designed to get students to 7th and 8th grade foundational concepts they need to do well as 8th graders in an Algebra 1 course. 7th grade math, whether it's the regular level or the enriched level, their focus is totally on 7th grade content. So for those students, if they are interested in 8th grade algebra option, they somehow need to get that 8th grade content because that content's very important for doing well in Algebra 1. So Wave is a pathway that our students who don't start out in pre-algebra can still use that pathway to get to Algebra 1 as 8th graders. So we have created a customized 8th grade pre-algebra course on Wave. We have middle school teachers teaching that course to the Wave students, and we've started now enrolling students at the start of semester two who are interested in this pathway. So they have the second semester with teacher support to be able to finish that 8th grade content simultaneously with the 7th grade content.
I'm Mark Beversdorff. I'm the department chair at Horace Mammon School. And for next school year, for next school year, we're looking at continuing with our 7th grade math class and our 7th grade enrichment class. And rather than having our pre-algebra class, have a little bit larger group of kids in the enrichment area to take more time. So instead of that pre-algebra class that goes at such a fast pace and the kids aren't getting depth understanding, we feel it's better if they are in the, let's say, the normal 7th grade curriculum, but in a group of kids who are ready to go faster. It'll allow them to have kind of a more relaxed start to the school year. That 7th grade year of middle school is tough. And then halfway through this school year, we can look at who's ready to take the Wave course and continue with the same Wave course we have right now. Our current model, we make those decisions kind of the middle of the 6th grade year, kids that are ready to move on. And there's a huge difference between a 6th grader and 8th grader in terms of maturity and who's ready. The model that we want to move to next year will have us looking at kids in the middle of their 7th grade year. Granted, they're still not super mature, but they're a year more mature than what they were in the 6th grade. It also gives us a chance to see who's really ready to take that next step of jumping to algebra. Because as teachers of the enriched kids will know who was putting forth that effort that you know is going to be needed for the algebra level. And quite frankly, you know, who's making the grades, just like always was in test scores, like always, to take that next step. Another part of their 7th grade year that I've noticed from teaching the pre-algebra class for quite a while is that it's their first opportunity to be involved in sports. And the start of the 7th grade year, again, with also the beginning of their sports career, if you will, at the middle school, it's very stressful. 7th grade in general is a stressful year, just in terms of the middle school growth and pathway. So it gives the kids a chance to be a little bit more relaxed at the beginning of the year versus being in this class that goes super fast. Comments I hear from kids quite often are, you know, I don't know if I'm ready for this. I don't know if I can handle the pace and the stress level. And that's what I see, you know, when I'm just watching them, conversations I have with parents are about the mental health of their kids. With this path, again, they're having a more relaxed start to the year. They still have the same opportunity to get to algebra in 8th grade. I also happen to teach the Wave course that they take to get to algebra. So I have these kids in my resource, and, you know, the five kids I have right now, it's really nice to be able to see them every day and talk to them about how their course is going. Have them be able to ask me questions right away if they need some help with their 8th grade material. A couple of comments, you know, kids have made in the past about thinking that the Wave is an option is a good idea, but you have to be dedicated to it because you are doing something outside of your normal classroom routine. Good work at my own pace. Kids talk about sometimes, you know, they like to do things at their own pace. In your normal classes, you kind of have to follow what all the other kids are doing, but this Wave course does allow them to do it at home if they want. It allows them to do it during the resource time if they want. It would also allow them to work within the normal 7th grade class period, and we do that in place of our I-ready time. Kids are working on I-ready, a certain amount of time every week. We can have this Wave course be in place of that. And I think most of the, you know, why do we feel this change is necessary, things I kind of already touched on, but.
Some of the comments that we hear from the teachers teaching enriched is the enriched offers so much more flexibility within the classroom to meet the needs of the kids. They can go faster when they need to go faster. They can go deeper when they need to go deeper. They can pull it back when they pull it back. That option's eliminated in the pre-algebra option because you have to cover so much content. It is pedal to the metal all the way. There's no slowing down at all. The other piece, and probably the biggest change from last year to this year, is we pulled the Wave enrollment up from spring break last year to the start of semester two this year. So we pulled it up almost eight weeks. So that essentially, as the plan is, that students don't need to go into the summer anymore. They don't need to spend time outside of school necessarily on Wave to complete that. They can do it like markets that in their resource time. It condenses it down. It takes off that, that whole, the summer's gone because now I'm doing pre-algebra on Wave in the summer. That, right now, none of the kids are scheduled to have to do that. They're all scheduled to finish, this year's crew is scheduled to finish within the school year.
Will you speak to the success we saw through the two pathways?
Sure. It's kind of interesting in the numbers. I always preface it because I'm a numbers guy. The sample sizes are not big enough, so understand that. But through the last couple of years in pre-algebra, we're seeing about a 48% success rate. So for the students, our best and brightest students who enroll in pre-algebra at 7th grade, so mind you, they're being determined this at 6th grade. When they get to Algebra 1, 48% of them have maintained an A-level grade. Now, if we're moving. Now, if we're moving kids forward a full grade, we would hope that they would maintain that A-level status. We're only seeing less than half of those kids maintaining that. The wave one, the numbers aren't strong enough, but we have 13 right now, and 13 out of 13, when we accelerate them at seventh grade, all had an A in the first semester of their Algebra I class. The teacher can't distinguish between which kids went through wave and which kids went through the pre-algebra course. So it gives us the accuracy we get with our best and brightest students. We don't want, we don't want their confidence. We don't want any student's confidence to fall, but I feel really awful when our top students all of a sudden are feeling like they're not adequate, that they can't do it anymore. And this kind of, I'm not going to say eliminates it, because it's never going to be perfect, but it moves us along the path a lot.
That's it?
That's it.
Well, first of all, let me ask the board members if there are any questions.
I've got a couple, Jim. I think I'm confused. Could you go back, Cassie, to the new, what it's going to be for 23, 24? So if I understand this right, there, for the kids who are in that top tier and are ready and are successful, the 48% that keep an A going forward, their only option, starting this fall, is to continue that accelerated pace through wave?
That's the plan, that we take that pre-algebra piece out, because instructionally, the teachers, both the enriched and the pre-algebra teachers, have come to us saying, this is a better option for kids.
But what about the kids that don't learn well online?
So far, in this population, we haven't encountered. So there's a couple of kids who have fallen off, but they weren't recommended in the first place. So we have three students this year who started the wave option at second semester. And all three of the students had conversations, so to get into their, they have a conversation with the teacher, they have a conversation with myself, and then I talk with the parents also. And we have this, the conversation is about readiness, is this really where you want to be? All three of these students had, I'm going to call them flags on right now, where there were some concerns and the parents weren't sure, and all of them were under a try-it system. And that's, that's another perk to this. We can try this, they can pull out, and there's no issue with that at all. They stay in their seventh grade class. So they're able to be enriched throughout the year, but then this option comes available to them. So far, we haven't had a parent complaint with it yet, and we haven't had a student fall off of it that we didn't have a flag or anything.
I happen to be a parent who had a child that went through this, and she was right on the cusp, you know, in sixth grade of, should she go into pre-algebra? Got into seventh grade, and then I think your staff obviously quickly realized she should, you know, participate in the wave program and did an excellent job. And I think you referenced it earlier, that it's not just they're sitting in a, online and do it, they have the resource classes, they have ample opportunity throughout the school year to sit down and have physical instruction and ask questions about the lessons that they're going through and prepare them for eighth grade and moving into Algebra I. And so my particular example, I think every child that did that in that particular group last year ended up doing very well, and it was a very good experience, so. My own.
It's kind of a hybrid model, almost.
And that's, that's excellent. I just, I'm struggling getting over the idea that for those kids who want to go, the word pedal to the metal, can handle it, and I appreciate what you said about creating an environment in which they can relax in the beginning and whatever, but there's some kids that don't want to. There's some kids that want to, they're all in, right? They're going to be at the top of the course, they don't do good online. And I know some of those kids, because I live with a couple of those kids, okay? For my example, the only option for them is, would be, you know, in this example, would be to go through wave, and I, I'm struggling to understand, why do we always seem to push those top-tier accelerated kids to these online sources, rather than flip it around, why don't you put some of the other sections in online wave where you can give them all of the support they need? And bring those that are truly accelerated up, give them their section like they have today, and keep them going, and challenge them, and see how far they can go.
Ironically, you kind of described a, an experiment that we're looking at starting, that we were looking at starting this year and being quite pull the trigger on it second semester, but we have one teacher who wants to do exactly that. They want to take all of their kids and put them for a portion online, with support in the classroom, and then backfill it with other pieces, more the, kind of a reverse hybrid model from what you were talking about before. The wave piece gives us more options, as much as, and when I say us, I'm saying the students and the teachers. The teachers right now, they have to follow this piece, and with that pre-algebra course, they have to go so fast that they can't modify the course up or down to meet the needs of the kids. The wave option gives them the ability to do just that. And as Mr. Krishna mentioned, it's not just an online option. They might see, they might watch videos, but they'll get as much face-to-face interaction as they would in a regular classroom, because they're doing all this stuff in that resource room with the teacher.
And with other students. I think that's an important piece, too, is by doing it this way, they're going to be in a classroom, doing their seventh grade math work, but also having a cohort of people, of students, that they can sit down during that work time with and/or during the resource time and have those math conversations and get the feedback from an adult. So it is, it's a blended kind of model.
Are there excelled seventh grade students that are taking eighth grade courses?
Full grade level acceleration? It's always single digits. Like, we'll get one or two. I want to say there are two fifth graders right now that are enrolled in sixth grade math, and it's always seems to be about them.
That was going to be one of my questions, is are, so there still are exceptions to this?
Oh, yeah.
Because I mean, I know of students that, I mean, I know of students that are like, their college is done before they're even a senior in high school, so there's exceptions to this.
Always, yeah.
It sounds like, to Pat's point, it sounds like one of the issues is that you struggle halfway through sixth grade identifying which students are going to be the 48% that are sixth, right? Like, you're, because I understand your point about what about those, how many students are in each section?
So that's the other issue we're running into right now, is we see a declining amount that are qualifying. We're not really qualifying whose families are choosing to go this route as much as anything else. We are actually seeing more students who qualify typically at the 95th percentile and up, they'll go into pre-algebra from sixth grade, if their screeners are testing at the 95th percentile and up. We actually have higher numbers testing at that number this year. We have less families choosing this option because they don't want to accelerate. So we're seeing this decline in numbers. So right now, at Mier, we had 13 kids, and at Mann, we had 15 kids. However, in each of those, five kids chose, five families chose not to do this. So that puts us at eight and 10.
And so to Pat's point about what about the four and five that we know it's going to work for, but you don't know which four and five it is when you're trying to guess at that, and, not guess, but when you're trying to do that in sixth grade?
Well, and if you want to, I mean, we could drill this down to content-wise, and sixth grade finishes a ton of algebra, elementary concepts. We finish fractions, we finish decimals and percents, we finish all the multi-digit addition stuff. We only briefly talk about variables. Seventh grade introduces algebra. So we actually get to make decisions on, or support students with decisions on who's going to succeed based on algebraic concepts that they're actually going to be doing. It's just a much cleaner time to make that move forward.
How is geometry for eighth graders handled right now?
It's in the classroom.
It is in the classroom?
Yeah. Yeah, about half the year in eighth grade is geometry, half the year is algebra.
No, but I think he's saying, like, if they, if they're advanced.
Yeah, yeah, if they're advanced, where are they, where are they attending?
Goes through, well, we don't have many. Again, it's the single-digit piece, it was through, they have a choice, they could either, well, they have one of three choices depending on the situation. They could, I get messed up by the schools. They can do wave, which most of them choose to do a virtual option. They can go to the school typically first period, so they miss the least amount of time. Those are pretty much the two options.
And those are the ones that we don't transport, because I remember the discussion from John Mier, we couldn't figure out how to get them a mile over the hill.
Yeah.
Right? So they are responsible for their own transportation. So now, awesome. Just because they didn't have to, or they, there was? And I understand and appreciate what you guys are trying to do here, it's just, it's almost a, I don't know if it's part of the culture that's being developed in the district, but every time, it seems like we're trying to compartmentalize those really gifted learners, and we're going to put them online, and we're going to put them over here, rather than figuring out how can we really wrap a lot of resources around them, really challenge them, and see how high they can go. That, that's from, from my chair, that's what's frustrating about hearing this, because it comes up, it seems like once a year with different courses.
And I understand what you're saying. I actually think in this case, having those individuals, because they're in that enriched class also, that enriched class, you're taking our best and brightest seventh grade math students, putting them in one room, and saying, take this content, and we can do whatever we want with them. And if, if our enrichment teachers who are here, they would say that they vary it greatly, and they move them up, and they move them back, and they switch their groups around, and they go as deep and far as they want to. The nice part about wave is it allows even more flexibility, because wave is going to take care of that pre-algebra content. We've narrowed that down specifically to that piece, which allows that seventh grade math, once the seventh grade pieces are pretty much accomplished, they can do whatever they want with it at that much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Karen.
I have to say that I agree quite a bit with what Pat's saying, and I guess my question is, is this, is this just about enrollment numbers? Because as a parent of two students who took the pedal to the metal class, and it was appropriate placement, you know, I'm concerned about seeing that option removed. And I guess I'm just wondering why, if, if there's some that seem to struggle once they're in that placement, are they unable to then just slide back into the seventh grade enriched class? Or is that not possible from a staffing standpoint? Is it that you're not getting the enrollment you need in order to staff pre-algebra? Because I just, I'm just trying to get the whole picture, I guess.
Yes, so our, our students can, if they're in the pre-algebra class, they can slide back down, but the confidence level of the kid, if you take a kid that you moved them up into a pre-algebra class, and, you know, they're a bright kid, they know they're really good at math, they're struggling then with this pre-algebra class, and we move them back down into the core seventh grade, it's a huge, just kind of kick to their confidence. It's not a positive movement to go back down. And so that's something we definitely want to avoid, sending them back down. In terms of the class number size, I mean, I don't know what's an acceptable number of kids to have in a class, but of course, you know, that's, that's making that, that class even smaller. But the biggest issue is, that I see is the confidence level of our students to move them down versus this new system that we're hoping for is moving them up halfway through their seventh grade year, when they've had a chance to really solidify their confidence, show they're ready to go and move up. Well, I think something we didn't mention is, by doing this, there's a clear expectation to make that jump into pre-algebra, into the pre-algebra concepts through wave. So the ownership that the student kind of carries to this process, instead of having the teacher determine it, the student can prove it to us. They can, they take this ownership and they carry that, and with pride, and they go after this stuff. They know what the expectations are, and they know where they have to be to meet those expectations. Karen, an answer to your question, is enrollment an issue for this year? Yes. But it was even being talked about before we had the enrollment concern, before we knew what the enrollment was, because it's just a better process coming from the teachers.
I can appreciate why the slide back is not ideal. I completely agree that that's, that's a problem. My concern, I guess, is that, you know, you said that 48% are getting As. My guess is, a good number are also getting Bs, which is, I don't know, I don't necessarily think is a problematic grade for a pre-algebra kid in seventh grade. Maybe you guys do, I don't know. So I guess my concern is again, for the kids that are absolutely ready, and seventh grade enriched math is not meeting them where they need to be challenged, you know? So that's my concern.
Well, it's not something we won't revisit. The plan is to put this in place, the plan kind of typically is to put this in place for next year, and then in 20, at the end, at this time next year, revisit where we're at, and determine whether it's a success or not a success, and what alterations we need to make again.
Don't worry, I got to handle grandpa's new watch.
I will get you later. Darn technology, right? Sorry about that, Karen. No disruption. Other questions?
No, stop.
Okay.
Well, maybe the other, the other question you should ask then, is if you, if you have these couple of students that are, that are doing very well in pre-algebra, I guess, is, is wave the solution for them to move into just the algebra class?
Wait a second. Sorry.
If they're really, like, they're getting everything, and they're just the exception, right? Is wave the way to keep them at, at Mier or, right? And just do, let them do the algebra class in wave?
I think wave is a very good option for a lot of kids. It's different from what, like, last board meeting here at the presentation, and wave is doing extremely well right now. I think it's a viable option for anybody. I think the point Pat brings up earlier is valid. Not all kids will succeed in the wave, just like not all kids will succeed in the classroom. Then you have to talk to the child and see what's really going on. What's the best option for them? And that's kind of why this option is so enticing, is because it opens up the door to a lot of different options. You're kind of exposed to a lot of different learning in one year, in a seventh grade year, which is kind of a fail-safe. We have some safeties put in place there, and then in eighth grade, you get to really go where you're going to end up. You start to get your high school path determined at that.
Have you started to look at all how this system, having potentially fifth, sixth, and seventh graders in the building, how any of that would change? Have you begun any of that?
We have. Math has already started the resequencing process. There's a whole lot to that. I mean, it's, it's complicated. There aren't as many changes as what you would think. K-8, the changes start nine, 12, is really where we kind of really have to look at a lot of things. We don't have that many accelerations prior to seventh grade.
If I could ask a question, I'm listening to what people are asking about our most gifted students, and trying to, you know, really encourage, support, see how far they can go, right? In your experience, do our best and brightest math students have that opportunity to go as far as they possibly can? Is that a fair enough question?
I do.
Yeah.
And what would it look like, if you could help me?
Well, first of all, with the pre-algebra course, what I don't get to see is how deep these kids can go. They have to go through it very fast, and typically, they're kids who like to do their work fast. I want to slow them down, and I want them to get them into an area where they think deeply about concepts, not just go fast. So we have the opportunity to do a lot of difficult material with the kids. The problem is, I don't have a lot of time to spend on the difficult material. Dive into a question and see where it's going to take us. And this new option will give me a chance to work with these.
And this new option will give me a chance to work with these kids in the same kind of facet, but I can slow down and, and use the more difficult questions and really see what the kids can figure out on their own without me having to prod them along quickly because we have so much to do. So it will give these kids a chance to go really deep and really develop their thinking skills in a, in a process of how you deal with difficult questions versus a teacher having to give you hints on how you deal with difficult questions. Good and bad to both. The WAVE course again, I have these kids in my room, which is awesome because they just ask me how to do things. You know, they get stuck on something, they don't know what a question means. I'm there right away. They turn in assignments immediately to me. I can see them and we just talk about what they're getting wrong. So, um, it's allowing them to be successful and not just a true online course situation. And then again, in algebra, with all the kids that I have, no one's sitting in the room right now without a challenge. Because again, they're, they're a year ahead of normally where they would be. And the, the algebra year is very difficult. So they're coming off a seventh grade year where they sped through everything and they're going right back into an eighth grade year of algebra where we're still doing some eighth grade concepts that we had to catch up on and we're speeding through algebra. So I'm, I'm just looking forward to seeing these kids not speed through things and have a chance to see where we can go depth-wise instead of just.
I think you would extend upon that. The students can go where they want once they get that algebra threshold. And that's where the pathways really start to come from. If you're a STEM oriented child, you can go, we have tons of kids, many kids in the Kelt, we have kids who go to NTC and take Kelt II or Kelt BC, whatever we can call them. Um, there's, the options are almost limitless on where they go. And we can meet them either in district or we can meet them by taking, going to UWNC or NTC.
Thank you.
My final comment would be, what I'm hearing is that you are encouraging acceleration. You're helping students if they're not ready to accelerate, but to accelerate if they're not quite ready at the beginning of that year. Sounds like that's where we're going. And you're also catching students when they need to be caught. So you're taking care of all three levels. And I always think from the, uh, the final side, you know, do we have enough? And you just answered the question. We have AP Calc, we have stats, AP Stats, we have IB Calc, we have all of that. And if they outrun that, they can also go to the universities that we have in our community. As many school districts do not have that because of the fact they don't have a university in their backyard. So we're accelerating, but we can continue to accelerate all the way through, correct?
For those kids who want it.
Correct. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I always like to hear about acceleration into the high level courses. All right. At the March Education Operations Committee meeting, Mr. Tess and Mr. Anderson reviewed the progress so far at the Stetin, South Mountain and Riverview Elementary, as well as the Environmental Learning Center. So I presume we have some more additional.
No, I'm just up here for the next one. Nothing new on the construction update. Although that last budget slide, you will see some evolution of that, how that's evolved since that meeting. So nothing new on the construction update.
So we'll continue on and as referendum projects for each facility reach the end of the design phase, 95% completion, the board will see the designs and budget and be asked to consider approval of these plans to be issued for bidding. Here, 95% complete.
So this one, I'm here with Sharon again from Nexus and we're, we've seen this a few times before when we get to the 95% uh, design portion. We ask for your permission so we can send it out to bid and see what we get back. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Sharon.
Excellent. Um, once again, my name is Sharon Glue. I've been here a few times before. Um, Senior Program Manager for Nexus overseeing the design process for the referendum projects. So, um, next slide. All right. So today I just wanted to reiterate our purpose here, just to be clear, is we're giving you the 95% design update and we'll talk about that a little bit more as we go through this particular presentation. I'll give you the budget, design budget update. Um, we sent it to a detailed estimator to get feedback on that phase. And then this is probably new terminology that we'll start to talk about today as we're asking you to approve Phase One of the design for bid. So I'll go through what that means throughout the presentation today. So with that, I have the referendum board that was published for the scope of work for Hawthorne Hills. You can see that we're looking at adding a road, we're adding some parking. There's some interior work where we're doing a secure front entrance and some infrastructure updates within the building. We've also had district involvement, seven design meetings with the district and the school staff, principal, some of the maintenance folks involved to get through some of these decisions. What's not listed on this slide is we've also had very many meetings with the city of Wausau to get the road design coordinated so it meets the, you know, city's needs. So with that, I just want to show you the updated slide for the site plan that we have here. So I just want to, this is just setting the stage for the rest of this conversation. As you can see how the road essentially is laying into the space, you can see the clearance areas in the green, um, requiring, you know, the regrading and things to get the road in. We have a pickup and drop-off in the, um, is there the? Anyway, in the lower southwest corner, you can see in light green, a revised pickup and drop-off and parking area, and you can also see expanded parking. Uh, we are adding an outdoor generator. Um, it's inside the building right now. For code reasons, we're moving it outside and we are adding some drainage to some of the classrooms to be able to pick up some runoff from the site. So with that, that just gives you the high level overview. We, um, split this into two phases. Phase one, which is a building package and phase two is a site package. And we'll go through, you know, the logic behind that as we move through this presentation. So the building package essentially covers all the work that's inside the building for the referendum scope of work. So we did do, um, the front office, some ADA upgrades, things like that. So I just want to point out, in the light purple, those are the areas that we're just doing some simple ADA grab, um, grab bars into the toilet rooms throughout the building. And in the, um, brown, it's not really brown, the greenish brown, it, um, is some cubby upgrades to bring those to ADA where they're currently not. So the inside of the building scope of work is fairly straightforward. Um, the ADA handrails are actually being completed in a different bucket, um, through ESAR funding. And then, um, the rest of the scope of work, you know, I'll talk about the front office when we get there. So with the front office, we're doing a secure front entrance sequence that matches the other secure front entrance sequences for the district standards. Um, this one is a little bit more straightforward than some of the other offices that we've worked with. Um, we're adding a door or two here and there and a wall just to help secure and follow the standard. Um, with that, there is some site work with the interior building work. And I just again want to point out, we're adding drain tile to be able to help with some drain, site drainage to keep it away from the building. And we are moving the generator outside. And the red box just shows the general area where that, um, it's generally minor site work compared to, um, the road and the parking lots. So the mechanical work that goes into the inside of the building work is mainly, um, it's a reaction to the front office space. Um, we might need to move some fin tube, uh, unit heater, things like that, rearrange the VAV boxes. And we're redoing the natural gas to the new generator location. Very simple, very straightforward. No plumbing. Um, electrically, we are doing power telecom communications for the front office remodel. We are actually attaching the fire alarm system to central monitoring. So I'm not replacing a fire alarm system. It's pretty straightforward there. We are again, replacing the generator outside to deal with code compliance concerns. And for the PA clock system, it was decided as a team to not do that work at this point in time. Um, it, it's not quite in alignment with the mass communication upgrades. The system still works pretty well. So that was put on hold. So with that, we have a phase two. So, um, again, as we're going through this, we're starting to see some of the impact of the bidding climate and are estimating on the different areas for the site. So we wanted to take that step back and reassess with the district, um, redistricting plan just to make sure that we're going down the, um, correct path. But other concern that came up through the design was there's a lot of rock underneath the road, which, you know, impacts how the road design's going. So we want to make sure that we explore that effectively, you know, keeping cost and impact in the front of our minds. And we also, um, want to make sure, you know, there's a lot of city requirements that we're including in the extension of the road. For example, Cape Bush needs to be extended to be able to tie into the new intersection. So we are following the city requirements to extend that road so it's a full and complete intersection. So there's support work required to, um, be able to get that road system to work effectively. All the grading and everything like that is within Wausau city requirements. Um, but we're, part of the reason why we're splitting these apart is we just want to make sure that we take that step back, look at this, you know, from a more holistic point of view and to also be able to get any changes that might happen in the future into the design in the first time. So we're solving a couple of problems at the same time. The, the budget is trending a little bit high and we'd rather be proactive in looking at solutions than to come in and, you know, try to figure out what happened after the fact. So we're requesting to take a little bit of time to do that and make sure that we're getting all our ducks in a row, you know, as this design wraps up. So there's a lot of, you know, factors coming together that's making this a little bit more challenging. But this was a challenging design. You can see between the Google map without the road and the site plan that we're showing, uh, we have a whole lot of site clearing that we need to do to get the grading to work. And again, we just want to take that step back to evaluate it more completely before we send that design forward. So with that, I just wanted to highlight the different parking areas. We're looking at the pickup and drop-off, you know, as the building use might change a little bit, maybe the bus pickup and drop-off might change along with that. So we want to take that opportunity to just be thoughtful about it. And also, um, we are expanding, extending the parking lot, the parking stall count. And again, just based on the other factors that I've mentioned, we just want to make sure that we're looking at that correctly to make sure we're complete. So those are options that are in play, but we just definitely want to make sure that we're not sacrificing the safety or concerns of the kids at hand. And so that's one of the main forefront issues that we're looking at today. So with that, um, we did, we looked at the budget. We had a detailed estimate go through at the 75% set, mainly for the Phase One side. We did some high level Phase Two budgeting just to check our work a little bit. And you can see that original design budget, and this is split apart between the referendum, between the interior, we're just calling it the interior, the building site or the building work versus the site work. Uh, we have an original budget split apart of about $690,000 for Phase One. Our 95% design budget's coming in around $700,000. You know, we, we can work with that. We can get something in that meets those budgetary needs. But we did put a future design for the Phase Two as a, to be determined because we really want to evaluate that and see what we can do to make it work. So we're recommending, um, the Phase One that we're, we're comfortable with. The Phase Two, we would like to hold off on that for a little while so we can make sure that we hit those budget numbers on bid day. So with that, um, we have the board action that we're presenting for you for Phase One, the building work with some supporting site work. We also are requesting that you approve the plans for Hawthorne Hills Elementary, Phase One, as presented to bidding. And then we're recommending putting on hold that road design for, for a little while to help solve some of the problems that I've identified. And I would like to turn it over to, um, the board for action. Any questions?
Let's start with questions. Any questions?
So I, I'm assuming because we're talking about at least a 700 for the first phase of it, does that mean, is Hawthorne staying open and Franklin is closing? Has that been decided now?
Has not been decided. But Hawthorne, um, if it were to be closed, would be repurposed. We'll be keeping that building. This would be our, our intention.
Okay, so keeping the building for what to be determined?
Um, the most likely scenario right now would be one of the early learning centers. But we're still evaluating that. I'll have to come to the board yet.
All right. And my other question is the, the security audit that we have or had going on with, I think it was Mr. Trump. How are those or what elements of that have, are being incorporated into these new designs?
I'll take that back up a little bit. If Kale's in the room, then he's not.
He had a meeting earlier. He might be down shortly.
Uh, this view is the best one to show while talking about this. He's seen all of our floor plans for this entry sequence. And he agrees with us that that entry sequence should take visitors into the main office. And we have a primary secure area we call the vestibule and a secondary secure area called the office. And he agrees with that. Uh, he's doing site reviews. Uh, he's reviewed all the buildings. Now he's putting together probably the reports and he agrees with what we're doing here. Uh, much of the work he's doing is more focused on behavior of the occupants of the building and some procedural stuff, but he's in agreement with the floor plan.
Okay. Because that was part of the board request was to get those reports, that kind of comprehensive. So that's still being built up. Okay.
He's had his site visits already. Now he's working on those reports.
Great. Thank you.
I'm, I'm curious, uh, the picture you were on there, Bob, it, is this like a remodel of existing space? Cause I'm not totally familiar with the, the link.
No additional square footage unless that vestibule itself, not even that, uh, right where you see the vestibule, and I'm not going to be able to point at this thing. The vestibule remodel, uh, a couple of doors in new spots, remodel. But other than that, a lot, not a lot of walls even moving on this.
Right. There's one wall in between the office. You can see it's the darker section in the middle. And then we are the darker wall right next to that front entrance with the door going into the corridor. That's also being remodeled as well. And that's to allow for the secured areas to maintain, you know, their function.
All right. If not, I'm going to seek a motion to approve planned designs for Hawthorne Hills Elementary, Phase One, as presented to be issued for bidding.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve those.
One second. Any follow-up questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along. John Mear facility improvement is the largest project resulting from the passage of the 2022 referendum. The administration will bring the final bid budget for John Mear and the resulting full referendum budget report for board review.
Thank you. Uh, this, uh, but this is a big project. This is the biggest of our projects. A $34 million project. And we told you, uh, several months ago that when we designed something, we're going to try to stay within the referendum budget. We did that. As a matter of fact, we felt we designed something that was cheaper than the referendum budget uh, in making some adjustments to our design. Uh, and then we told you, we would bring it to you if it exceeded 10% beyond that design budget. This did not exceed 10% because, but because how close it is to 10% and how large of a budget this is, we wanted to at least have this conversation, right? So we're having this conversation even though that bid budget came in about seven and a quarter percent over the design budget. So with that backdrop, I'll turn it over to Sharon for a slide or two perhaps, and then I'll take some of the budget slides. How's that?
Excellent. So with that, I figure you, the first thing you're looking at in this slide is probably the three numbers on the bottom of the slide. So our original concept project budget that went through with the referendum, um, a couple of years ago was $34,794,000. Uh, we did send this to our estimators and, you know, at the 75%, they did a detailed estimate on this project and it started to track low where we were confident that these numbers would come in, um, that we were confident to follow the $34,307,800. Um, so that was the budget that we've been following along after we had that task completed. So, um, being the volatile market that it is, uh, the bu- budget that came, well, I'll just call it a budget, the bids that came back on bid day came in to be about $36,790,953, which is seven percent, about seven percent over the design budget. So again, just to reiterate with what Bob's saying is we wanted to. So again, just to reiterate with what Bob's saying is we wanted to let you, that you all know what was, just to be transparent with how this is going, so you can see as we work through this in the next step. I do want to reiterate, we took a lot of effort upfront to streamline the design. All the additions came in at, you know, roughly 10% or smaller than the original referendum's square footages. Other things, we tried to combine the additions. We looked at, and these are big picture items. I'm reiterating a little bit from the 95% design meeting. We did streamline some of the interior renovations and things like that. So we did have a little bit of volatility. And I just wanted to point out some of the things that we saw is we had multiple bidders on most of the bid packages that went out there. We've noted that the general contractors seem to be pretty busy and that's something that we'll have to continue to observe as we move forward. And then the other areas that seem to be the biggest concern is electrical costs continue to rise and also the site work costs continue to rise. So those are some, looking at the, just the high level from the bid results, those are some trends that we were seeing. And we are taking, you know, we're looking at different areas just to see what that means to us as a, you know, construction management company. So just some examples of things that we're seeing is, for example, brick sizing. There's one area where we used a less than standard brick size in the design because it matched the existing building. And we found it smaller brick or a different brick size was a lot more cost effective. The architectural details made sure that it wasn't, like you didn't have the two brick sizes abutting against each other, so it wasn't obvious. So we're looking at those types of opportunities to be able to kind of refine some of these numbers where, well, one, the goal is to not have a negative impact on the student learning environment. So that's very important to us, to make sure that we're not shortchanging the student experience. And just continue to just look through this to see for other opportunities, other materials. Like another example is a product was discontinued during bidding, so we picked in a different, this was like porcelain tile. So we were, we were able to replace it, but we're evaluating to see if that replacement is the best solution. So, I mean, a lot of this, it's not really, I don't like to use the terminology value engineering because that's a little, that has connotation attached to that. But we're looking for, like this whole design process, the best way to move forward without sacrificing the quality of the building. So with that, generally, that's where we're at with John Muir. And I'll turn it back over to Bob.
Sure, I've, I've got a few more slides to see how this impacts that overall budget of the referendum. Keep in mind, we're managing an entire portfolio of about $124 million projects and to add in the interest earnings and some interest earnings to come yet because we haven't invested in $20 billion portion of our bonds as we haven't borrowed it yet. But I want to show you how this fits in to the entire portfolio and then perhaps we can come back and, and answer any questions that you would have on any of the slides. The evolution of this referendum budget report, you're going to see it every Ed Ops meeting now, yeah. Every Ed Ops meeting, we bring you a referendum construction update and any new numbers that are revealed at that point, you'll see in our budget report. I want to put them all together right now in quick succession so we can understand the differences. This is the last one that you saw two weeks ago. And if you look at the lower right-hand number, that gets a lot of attention, $2.46 million under budget. And we knew there were going to be some changes to this document because we knew we were bidding out athletics on 404, we're opening the bids, and we were opening the bids on John Muir on 329. And those were going to change. We don't know if they're going to go up or down, but they weren't going to be dead on exactly the same most likely. This is a change we talked about on the previous agenda item. This is us splitting Hawthorne Hills up into two budgets. There's a Phase One budget, there's a Phase Two budget. You can get used to seeing this quite a bit, actually. I think it'll happen more often in the district-wide component on top. That district-wide $8 million by the end of this entire referendum project might be split five or six different ways because we'll bid out district-wide stuff that many different times. So what we're doing with Hawthorne Hills and we did with East and West, we split it up into East and East Athletics, West and West Athletics. So we split up Hawthorne Hills, didn't really move the needle on the lower right, $10,000 more. This is the one that we're talking about right now. How did the overage from our design budget on Muir affect that entire portfolio? 7.24% over. It turned orange, so to speak. I had an encouraging conversation with Nick Anderson this morning about that being maybe even a little bit lower yet with one of the apparent low vendors that he's reached out to. We're ready to sign contracts on these being 7.24% over budget. Look at what happens to the lower right-hand number, $26,000 over budget. But last or two weeks ago, we also had a discussion about perhaps reapplying some of these categories and keeping it inside the referendum scope, but freeing up additional dollars for the projects that we know are absolutely going to happen. The example we used was Grant. The Grant Elementary, $2 million budget that we're carrying may not be used at Grant. And could it be reapplied to some other things? I didn't touch it. I left it in Grant. I left Horace Mann, Horace Mann. I left everything else the same. Keep in mind, that is a potential source of funding that'd be board-driven. Here are some other things that are, were not necessarily noticed, but it's germane in the conversation, so I think we can be talking about this. We also revealed the athletic bids. And I've got these a little bit lighter shade of orange, a lot of codes going on up there, but how the West design budget is light green, it's not quite dark green yet. The athletics is light orange, it's not dark orange yet because we're still reaching out to the apparent low bidders and we're still managing some of those costs and hopefully they're bringing those numbers even smaller yet. But those two athletics budgets together come in 4.98% under budget. So that brings that lower right-hand number to a little bit more comfortable number, $300,000 under budget for the entire portfolio thus far. So that's the evolution of this budget sheet where this is, I guess, where we're at right now. This is probably the one that's going to get the most attention. That's what we're known to be talking about right now, is this Muir budget and some of the reasons why it came in high.
So I think the good, I mean, the good news is, is that we've gotten through quite a few projects, including the two biggest. We're basically right on budget if you count the interest. Bad news is, is we're like right on budget. And so that's good considering how much inflation there is, but it also means it's going to be pretty tight for the remaining projects. And we'll have to, and if there are savings, like we used Grant as the example or something else because of consolidation, then we'll have to decide, you know, how that's best used. Overall, the consolidation saves money, but there are pockets of it that causes expenses. We talked about parking at West, I think, a few meetings ago. I would suggest that there may need to be more parking at South Mountain and maybe other places too, as some of the school's population grows a bit. So we'll have to make a decision if, if the restructure saves money, does that savings get used for something that the restructure costs extra? Or do we just put it back into this referendum and, and not adjust for inflation and things like that? But I think it's going to be pretty tight going forward, but at least we're, you know, the two biggest ones we're through and quite a few others as well, that's good.
Lance, just to clarify, isn't West the other big one? We, we don't have the bid budget back on that yet.
No.
So that, that's, that's just-
So that one could be high as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just got to the design budget.
Yeah.
Good point. And, and Horace Mann's pretty large as well and we haven't even gotten to that one yet. But considering where inflation is at, I think it's, it's pretty good that we're at this point. It just makes me nervous going forward. I think when we first started this process off, I said, my fear was, is that as we got to the end, the ones that were in the end, we're going to have to cut back a lot more than the ones that were at the beginning. So I still have that worry.
You made reference earlier to the amount of money saved through restructuring. And I think it's important to mention the categories of saving. We shared a pro forma statement with you a few months ago. That suggested, yes, we're going to save money by restructuring. But keep in mind, some of the money that you save is through a smaller referendum in the future, not real spendable money. Some of the savings are through less money being spent in a capital improvement budget district-wide. We're probably not going to reduce that capital improvement budget, we're just going to reallocate it to different places. So some of the money saved through restructuring is more spendable than others, if that makes sense, and more able to reapply to other things than, than other dollars. All savings aren't created equal necessarily. Also, if we're worried about the later projects getting shortchanged, the later the project, the closer we're going to get to the restructure date, the closer we're going to get to maybe understanding better where the $8.6 million of district-wide spending could be allocated. We've got a lot of furniture in the district-wide component. We've got some technology in the district-wide component. If we get to a point where we're getting to the end of these projects and we're also close to the restructure date, we could make a decision, of course, the board could make a decision, on reallocating some of that district-wide category, which I don't call protected for, used somewhere else, but kind of acts as such, right?
Yeah, and I, and I was referring, you know, specifically to dollar amounts that we would see on here. So the reason we use Grant as an example is because there's over $2 million planned for that, which we wouldn't do if we were selling the building. And so we, as a board, would have to decide, do we take that $2 million that is savings because of the restructure and apply it to things that the restructure, because the restructure provides relief in some spots and it provides pressure in some spots? Do we apply it to that? Or do we say, well, we're going to use that on, you know, for other projects here? I mean, that's something we'll have to decide when we, when we get there. But I think we need to start talking about some of those things sooner rather than later so that we're not just all of a sudden on the last four projects having to decide, are we cutting? We have to cut these way back because we didn't cut any of the other ones back enough.
I like that we're having this conversation routinely. At least every month, sometimes twice a month, we're having this conversation and we talk about Grant and we talk about reapplying maybe some of the district-wide and we talk about money that could be generated by a sale of Grant. And we are talking about restructuring is going to come with some expenses, some one-time expenses for certain things. The fact that we're having those conversations as often as we are, it won't sneak up on us and we will be able to answer those questions as they come up with the most recent information. It'll be an important decision.
Well, this was an informative, are there any other questions? Because this is a good time to bring the questions forward if we're going to, because this is, this was information for us, correct?
Correct.
And with that, thank you very much, and we'll move on.
Thank you.
Next item, Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative Agreement. Wausau School District Nutrition Service Department currently belongs to the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative. The Co-op is requesting member districts to present the Co-op's resolution to their respective school boards for approval of continued membership for the 2023-2024 school year. So with that, we've already talked about that in our previous meeting. I am seeking a motion to approve continued membership in the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Co-op by passing the presented resolution and agreeing to the 2023-24 66.0301 cooperative agreement.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving right along. Private school boundary amendment. All private schools served by the district need to have boundaries approved by the board. A minor change is being proposed by both Trinity Lutheran School and St. John's Lutheran School to more closely align with the location of the two schools. These two schools have already approved this change and the final step is for the board to approve the change today. I am seeking a motion, which we've already talked about in the previous meeting. I am seeking a motion to approve the presented private school boundaries for both Trinity Lutheran School and St. John's Lutheran School. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item, charter school contract approval. Dr. Rousher and Principal Seymour shared an update on the waived charter school and the proposed waived charter contract renewal to the board. Are there, is there a follow-up on this or no?
I don't have any follow-up. I just have Bob's going TV company. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to-
Well, let me go with the motion. I am seeking a motion to approve the waived charter contract renewal as presented. So moved. Second. No, any questions? Any follow-up questions? Doesn't look like it. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Continuing on, the agreement between the school board and the city for the recording of school board meetings was last entered into on December 2nd, 2014, for the 2015 calendar year. This document is considered intergovernmental and we are required to have a current agreement. I think we talked about that earlier as well, so I'm going to put the motion on, or put the reading of the motion. I am seeking a motion for approval of the production agreement between the district and the city of Wausau. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Again, thank you very much. At this time, we're moving right along. Their board membership or board member professional growth and development reports. Are there any reports from any of the board members?
None.
Nothing? Well, then I'll move right to legislative lay-assign. Mr. Webster, your final comments to the board. I will turn it over to you.
Really appreciated the opportunity to do this over the last year. I was very frustrated in the past by the way some of this was handled and it didn't really address issues. And we have a huge issue, of course, going right now with the legislature because we're appreciating on down the road to get funding for these various schools. I attended the Day of the Capitol last month and it was very informative. There's a general, general sense of that there's going to be money available, but when we had presentations from four legislators, it was the lining up for the height of the National Football League, they were very opposite positions and that was disheartening. However, at the opportunity to meet with our local legislators, John Spiros, and their both houses were actually in session. So John Spiros actually left the, left the House floor and came and met with us. And we met with all three of their, of their representatives. I was incredibly impressed. If there's ever any question about whether it pays to meet their legislative representatives or not, it was totally answered. They were very articulate, they were very, very clear, and they were very willing to listen to the things that we were talking about and the things that we proposed. I had with Keith and Jim before and Bob, a few recent suggestions. And I think they were very sensitive to the fact that we were just talking very specifically about professional education funding as the advisory resource. We also thought, well, now, and because we were together with other districts, the whole, all the areas and funding were probably. The thing that's important to recognize right now is that in the next few weeks, they are having public hearings about the, about the budget. You can hear there or you can do it online. I sent you information about how to make contact. But I think it would really be helpful right now to be in contact with them and give them and let them know how critical it is that they have to be looking at public education funding. So that's, that's the, that's the main- So that's, that's the, that's the main piece. And I'm very much aware, more aware, having been in this position, how incredibly important it is for board members to be active in participating in this process. Because legislators are willing to respond to the proactive constituents, and because you're elected officials, we're elected officials, they are more likely to listen to us than they may be any of the other people that are contacting us. So I really encourage you to make those contacts, and if you can't get through to the legislator, talk to their representative, because those people really know what's going on in that. Some of them, because I think they know more because they've studied the specific issues within the legislature. So thank you again for listening, and I participated in this position, and I do have my report submitted by email. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let you speak for a minute, and then I'll take over and finish up.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Before I speak to an event we had today, just want to thank Mr. Webster for his years of service. He and I have had a number of conversations over the years, and I appreciate your focus on students and families and staff, so thank you. Just want to share that today, Diana White and I had a good restructure meeting, conversation with the Noon Optimists. We've got a few more scheduled out. It's, people are definitely interested, they're definitely listening, there's support and there's concern, and, but it was a, a, a group that really understood, that they've been paying attention. So we had some really, really good suggestions. One was to pay particular attention to scholarships, for instance. You know, that's an area we haven't worked on yet, but we had a suggestion that maybe we reach out to the people who, who provide scholarships and beyond that list and, and see if we can start doing some, some concrete work around plans for scholarships for high school students once we've merged into one school. So that's one, that was one helpful piece of feedback we got today, so that's all I've got.
Well, at this time, I would like to take a moment to recognize Mr. Webster for his work, not just in the district, but also what he's been doing with the Wisconsin Association of School Boards and being the region director for Region Five. It's my honor to talk a little bit about Mr. Webster and his six years on the board here in Wasaw, has committed himself to working for the students and the families of our community, and has always stood up for the right thing, and that means academics, that means athletics, that means arts. He's been at many, many activities throughout the six years that he's been on the board. I'm very impressed with the fact that he is a participant. He's not just watching, but he's out there working, and people know who he is. Some people don't like him, some people do like him, we all like him. And the bottom line is, if we can go through life being liked by the majority, that's all we can ask for, and that's a blessing. And so, Mr. Webster, for all the work that you have done from Wisconsin Association of School Boards, certificate of commendation, I am presenting this to Lee Webster in recognition for your service to the children in the Wisconsin Public Schools, April 24th, 2017 to April 23rd, 2023. Mr. Webster, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Now it's my turn.
You can finalize.
Six years ago, when I walked into the board meeting, I was, of course, quite anxious, and I walked around and sitting in exactly the seat that I'm sitting in was Teresa Miles. Teresa looked up at me to welcome me and said, "How old are you?" And she clearly wanted to establish that she was not the oldest board member. I have had that honor now for six years, and it's going to be transferred to Grandpa Jim. I'll take that. When I came onto this board, I was really concerned, and it was a very difficult first few years. There were times where there was just incredible dissension, and we were also dealing with some really, we dealt with some very, very difficult, difficult issues. And I'm just so grateful to have been part of this board now for this last year, and I'm looking forward to what's going to happen with the coming, the upcoming board. It's a board that has dealt with and is dealing with very difficult issues. They're looking at things like restructuring, but we've already gone through the COVID crisis, we've gone through a couple of referendums, we've gone through multiple kinds of issues, and it's exciting to be with a board where people respect one another. And I'm really looking at and taking the best interests of the students of the district to heart. And my one regret in leaving the board, right, or one of my biggest regrets, is that we're at a time when we're making changes that are going to be so critical for the future of this district. And at the same time, I'm really glad that this board is one that I really believe has the ability to move ahead and, and take the bull by the horns. So I really appreciated working with each of you and with the administration, with the teacher students, whomever had come in contact. And certainly, the public has been, been very, very nice to me most of the time. So I thank you, and I really appreciate this certificate, but most of all, I appreciate having been able to be with each of you. Thank you.
With this, I'm, I'm asking for the written board member lay-assign district activity report and ask that this report be entered into the official record. And now, I'm requesting to go into closed session, passing the state statutes to consider on renewal of individual features contracts under Section 118.22 of the state statutes pursuant to Section 19.851c of the state statutes. At this point, we'll need a roll call. Vote?
Some moves.
Thank you.
John Krieger?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Cody Nicolai?
Yes.
Joanna Reyes?
Yes.
Corey Solers?
Yes.
Lance Trala?
Yes.
Karen Vandenberg?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.